Good evening, and thank you all for attending tonight's meeting. I'd like to advise everyone that recently our superintendent of Public Works, Anthony Oroza, has resigned his position from the village. I wish Anthony Oroza good luck in his future endeavors. The next meeting for us will be on Thursday, October 27th. There will be only one meeting in November, held on the 17th. Special meetings may be called if necessary. I would just like to thank the trustees who attended last evening's St. Paul's Committee presentation. I'm extremely glad to see the progress the committee has made, and excellent presentation by our fellow resident volunteers. The presentation was enthusiastically received by those in attendance, and the presentation will be put on the village website, and the St. Paul's Committee website for all to view. Again, I thank all the committee members for their time and effort in addressing this major village issue. I would now like to recommend Mr. Thomas C. Lavandola for approval by the board to become an active member of the Garden City Fire Department. Chief Prime, is Mr. Lavandola present?
He is, Inspector.
Please, Nick. Would you like to give some information about Mr. Lavandola, please?
Absolutely. Thomas Lavandola is a graduate of Lincoln Tech, where he earned a degree in HVAC maintenance. He currently works as a service engineer for Industrial Coal and Inc. Prior to relocating to Long Island, Tom served five years in the Summitville Fire Department in Southwood County, New York. He's excited to have the opportunity to continue to serve in the fire service and to contribute to his new community.
Congratulations, Mr. Lavandola. I'd like to thank you for volunteering to serve our village. I would now ask for a motion to approve Mr. Lavandola becoming a member of the Garden City Fire Department. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? I'll second. Would you favor? Thank you very much, and congratulations, sir. Next on my agenda is, I'd like to point Deputy Mayor Tom O'Brien, who will work with the building superintendents, along with three selected restaurant owners in the village, to investigate, report, and make recommendations concerning outdoor dining prior to the next burn-in cycle. We'll be forwarding, let's go upon now, the department heads, beginning with Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one item on the agenda, number five, as I'm requesting, is Officer Donalds to move a carry of safety assistance program. It's a two-part program, a weekly piece. This will give the Officer Donalds the ability to do a complete truck inspection according to federal standards, and this will help us and help the village remove and deter unsafe vehicles from our roadways. We currently have one officer assigned to that. He has over thirty years with the department, so we thought it was time to train. We were trying to get an officer to train for the last couple of years, but because COVID, we weren't able to. So now we have an opportunity to do so, and again, it's great service for the village. Just, I'd like to bring up a couple of quick items. On October 29th, we're going to have our DEA drug takeback program. I believe we always get a few hundred pounds of drugs on those days. We do collect drugs 24/7, but that is a day that is all around the country, so a lot of people see the, they hear it on the news, they come right down to Garden City Police Academy, and we work with the DEA, will take all the unwanted, unused, and expired medications. I'd also like to just bring up a couple of great arrests by one of our officers made an arrest of a subject with a loaded gun, illegal loaded gun, and we also detectives, it took about a year of investigation, but it's a real estate scam where somebody, a person took the identity of the person's real estate attorney and emailed him to send over a large amount of money to cover the expenses for purchase of a home, and it was a scam. The detective was able to figure it out, locate him, and bring to justice, and we got a lot of accolades from the District Attorney's Office for our efforts. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. I want to compliment you and your team for outstanding work. You've been extremely busy the last three weeks with a lot of incidents, and I thought maybe there's a couple of incidents you can bring to people's attention so that they can be on the watch to possibly direct some of the things that you're seeing around the fraud around banking, some of the suicides we're seeing, things like that.
Yes, we're always there for anybody who needs assistance, if they have family members who are struggling, and please call us. We have a great staff. We also work with NYU medics who have a vast experience in helping us, and we, and even though they're NYU, they'll take children who have issues to Coleman's today. They are fantastic, and it's been unfortunate, but my officers have done a great job, and you know, if anybody needs help, please call us, and that's the most important thing. And also, I just want to mention, I know he's going to bring it up, but the Fire Department had two excellent, I think they did a lot of excellent stuff this last few weeks, but really two special fires, I know he's going to talk about it, but we work together so well, and again, we save lives working together all the time, and it's an honor to work with them.
Thank you. Also, I think you brought to my attention that you're seeing a lot of depression lately that could be the cause of people being isolated in COVID, so I think people need to be on the lookout for depressed friends, relatives, or even neighbors that might need help.
Absolutely. I firmly believe, I'm seeing so many different types of cases since COVID, plus the usual items, but people are helping. We have, we work well with school district, they're reporting stuff, so we have, I think, prevented some other serious things from occurring, but we, there's a lot of people in the village that are aware, and they let us know, and they think there's something happening, especially families. We haven't prevented all the unfortunate tragedies, but like I said, we're always there, and you know, it's out there, so if you need help, let us know, or seek out a professional.
And thank you for your service. You saved some of those tragedies from occurring.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Next, Chief Prime.
Greetings, Mr. Mayor, Board of Trustees. The Fire Department has nothing on the formal agenda, however, I'd like to bring a few things to everyone's attention. In the month of September, the department responded to 110 total alarms, 100 of which were signal aids or lesser alarms, seven general alarms, and three mutual aids to surrounding departments. On behalf of the department, I'd like to extend an invite to all the trustees, well as every member of the community, to attend our Open House in Fire Prevention Day this upcoming Sunday. It'll begin at 12:30 at Fire Headquarters, right out here in the Stewart Avenue parking lot. It's a fun day, it's an educational day, so bring the kids, everyone will learn something that day, so please, if you have some spare time between football games, come on down. And as the Commissioner alluded to in his remarks, the department has had a busy couple of weeks. We've had several house fires, some close calls, some severe accidents, and I'd just like to thank my membership for their incredible work. I'd like to also echo the Commissioner's remarks about the cooperation and the working alongside of our two departments. It's been an incredible relationship for as long as I can remember, and it continues to be so. On behalf of the department, I'd like to thank the police in this great town, and I'll be happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
That's fine.
I had the privilege of attending one of the after-action reviews from the Fire Department, and it was quite impressive. There had been two fires of note in recent weeks, and the presentation by the Fire Department as an after-action report is very impressive in that they had a PowerPoint presentation, they had aerials, they had photographs, and they reviewed both of the members that responded as well as those members that did not. This was a very thorough and thoughtful presentation in order to better the training and responsiveness. Merely because you don't see something happening doesn't necessarily mean that there are a lot of things that are going behind it that contribute to the success of the department, the coordination with the police department, and with the village itself. In that regard, kudos to the Building Department, Mr. Giavennelli, who has put together the RFP with regard to the renovation, with regard to the edge of your fire department. The Fire Department has weighed in what they believe are both necessary, and more importantly, during the process, they said, "There's a lot of things here that we do not need. There's not a lot of costs that others may think we need, but we do not. We just want to be able to do it correctly, safely, and in such a way that is efficient for the operation of the department." That, of course, is my lead-in to one of the processes that the department has with regard to buying a new engine. On the NMS Committee, there is a buying cooperative for municipal fire department equipment in which the HGHAC, which it took me a while to find them on the internet, but it is a nationwide buying cooperative for fire department equipment which is effective in both reducing the price and deferring certain costs until after you get the equipment instead of laying out the money as the equipment is being constructed. Since there is a long lead time on fire department equipment, obviously, if we keep the money in the bank, that will be a better way of doing it. So my kudos is to the department, their efforts, and also to the Building Department for the coordination on getting the job done. Thank you. If it doesn't through you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just add, I'd just like to publicly thank the Fire Commissioner for taking time out of his busy day. I know, just like everyone else, he swamps with his personal life, professional life, so again, thank you for coming down and spending time with the membership.
We have no questions.
Welcome to the party.
That's good. Then Chief, Dr. D.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, the schedule, I will move and finish on Zoom.
Yeah, I'll give you the other one. On tonight's agenda, there's one item for the Finance Department, item number one. It's for authorization is requested, so approximately $5,500 is to be returned from the reserve for complicated expenses, and this is to pay out to recreation employees who have left the research center recently. That's the only item on the agenda tonight.
Very good, thank you. And license building superintendent representative, Giavelllo.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. The Building Department has two items on the agenda this evening. Item three is the first. First item, item three, the GIS services transfer funds to engage professional services from principal, most H2N architects engineers, which is asking for the board authorization to transfer funds, $8,800 from the building to the contractual services line. This is for the GIS services to help the Building Department engage surveys and any input that we are implementing in the new implementation of pilot. So this is just the help of the guidance through GIS and putting the package together for them to assist the Building Department. The second item is item four, and that's the planning services inspections, transfer funds to engage the contractual services for Rich Barbieri, the building inspector and plan reviewer, helping me assist the Building Department. He's basically my eyes and ears, second-hand out in the field on special projects, and this is for the board authorization to transfer $30,000 from the building contractual service line to the regular salary line. Rich Barbieri's been with the village for approximately three years now, and he's the great assistance to the Building Department, and that's basically to transfer funds for helping him to engage.
Can you explain the $30,000? Is that a lump sum that you pay him, or does he draw against that amount?
No, it's actually, he draws against that, the hourly rate of 75 an hour per inspection, per hour, to perform inspections and plan review.
How long does that typically cover for? Is it a year, is it six months?
This is going to go through basically till January, right now. So you figure, I got 75 an hour, it's on-need basis. He works right now for the village two to three days a week as an on-call, basically, inspector and plan examiner. So he basically works on these special projects for me which need more attention and more eyes and ears out in the field. In conjunction with that, he's actually working on the village library for me as well, and he's attending library meetings twice a week.
Is it an inspector?
Inspector and plan reviewer, yes.
By way of background, Mr. Barbieri is known to me because he actually did the inspection on my house when I had it built. Worked with him on a personal basis for a number of years, and on many projects during my first tenure.
Very efficient and a wealth of knowledge. Thank you, that's all I have, Mayor.
So one question, so we're talking on an annual basis, you're charging $90,000 for paying?
No, no, it's not. He only borrows, he's what we call his comp bird, so he's here only a few months out of the year, and he's helping, assists the summer months out of the year.
Okay, so it's only a period of time during the year, it's not a full year, so I'm wondering, like the $30,000, I guess until January, then is it another $30,000, so around $30,000, or is it just $30,000 this window, and then each way?
Right.
People that we need.
Correct, that's correct.
Thank you, Detective. Paul Blake is away on the village conference. I will go now to Village Council, Eric Fishberg.
I have nothing on the agenda, but I'd like to report that we did get back the license agreement for 1,200 Franklin Avenue. It was signed by the owner of the property. We're still awaiting two more items in conjunction with that agreement, that is a deposit, basically an escrow deposit to ensure that there is no damage to any village's property during course of license agreement, and also the certificates of insurance. Once you get that, everything will be ready to go. And just to expand a little bit on what trustee Torino said about that buying group, HGHAC, my understanding is that they do more than fire engines, that there's an opportunity there for the village to purchase other items from this buying group. And there's an exception in the general municipal law that's known as piggybacking, which allows a municipality to buy from a buying group like this, so long as that buying group purchases items through a bidding process that's similar to what's required by New York. And we've looked into the buying group, they actually have several municipalities from New York that are members of this group, and it appears, at least with respect to the fire engines, it appears that their bidding procedures were in conformity with New York bidding procedures, so that it's, you're authorized under this piggybacking rule to buy through the cooperative group. Thank you.
Next, Gus Fong.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Good evening, trustees, members of the public. Before I begin, I'd like to first wish Mrs. Janelle a happy birthday.
Oh, sure. Happy birthday, Mr. Janelle.
I know, there's no place you rather be.
This is true.
Also, respect to the cooperative that trustee Torino and Mr. Fishberg talked about. There's no fee for us to join, and it'll be on the October 27th agenda, for the board to have permission, so basically, it's just like the New York State contract, if heavily bid, we can buy not only five trucks, but other commodities, I mean. As far as public works goes, item number six, maintenance bond, rule number seven, if the board recalls back in the almost late spring, we had a hole, a baseball-sized hole developed in the well shaft of well seven, which reduced its pumping capacity from 12 to 1500 gallons per minute to 1500 gallons per minute. We needed it for the season, the board rightly approved emergency, and it was repaired and supplied this water throughout the summer months. This is a maintenance bond for that job in the amount of $132,137, and the maintenance bond is good for a period of 18 months. Item number seven on the agenda, there's another maintenance bond, this is for the interim emergency containment removal of Clinton Road Plant, that is for Filpp Ross Industries, otherwise known as PRI, and that is in the amount of $1,886,413, and again, that's for a period of 18 months. Item number eight, there's a gratification of exchange order for the asbestos being down the first floor business office. There were asbestos line pipes around the tunnels downstairs, and we had to remove it at a price of $19,106. The original estimate was $25,000. I want to thank Mr. Janelle for speaking to the vendor and getting the price down. Item number nine, there's a capital project known as a rehabilitation of monuments, and most of the funding was used for rehabilitation of monuments, but when it was conceived, and I placed on capital project, I also conceived replacing the sidewalk, the brick sidewalk that goes from the western employee parking lot to the zebra on Village Green, but the words of the capital project did not include those words. So the first bullet is to modify the language of that so that everything's on the up and up, and the second thing is to award to JT Mason Landscaping, at a cost of $23,500 for the replacement of that brick path. This will include shifting the curb cut north so that we can put the new bricks down away from the tree roots that are there, and it'll also make the gazebo accessible to persons with disabilities, because right now there's a six or eight step there, the bricks can be brought up, so it's a ramp now. And Mr. Kelly, trustee Kelly, you had asked me about this.
Yes.
This was planned. One of the things that this does include is the fence, but I did talk to Mr. Blake, because on his seat, I talked to him earlier last week, and he will have to place the fence price down on the New York State contract to replace. Also, Mr. Barnes, Steve Barnes from his team, who does all the beautiful landscape of the village, will redesign and uphold the plantings between the fence and the brick wall.
That's great, thank you.
Well, sir. Item number 10 is a request to transfer $6,000 to Engineered Contractual Services from Engineering Regular Salary. This is for continued funding for GIS services for general department use and super use. Item number 11 is to award a bid for the first floor renovation downstairs in the business office, had a cost of $241,500. I want the board to know that through the New York State contract recorder, we received 12 bids for this work, the lowest being the one we're awarding tonight at $241,500, the highest at $785. The average of those bids was $394,000. Item number 12, the entity library HVAC system replacement. This is a multi-step agenda item. The first is, we need to increase the bond that was recently authorized to, from $1,159, $1,169,000 up to $1,773,000. The second thing is to request authorization to transfer $700,000 to the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA, which I spoke to Mrs. Wu about, and the funding's available. The third is to request many board resolution. Can we go to the check that other type of thing? Yeah, let's see, something's on the line.
What did you say?
We put it out to bid, and we received a bid of 1.7, well, it was higher actually, $20,000 higher, $1,725,000. So we rejected the bid, this was over our budget, and we rebid it. This time we have five bidders, the lowest being $1,705,000, which is about $20,000 less than the same company that they bid last time. We have four of the bidders that range up to $2,419,000. The average bid there was $196,400. So the original capital project was just not estimated high enough. We do have to increase the costs as well. So by bidding a second time, we verified that the low bid last time was the right bid, and we got more competitive bids here, but they're not, they're all higher. So we're asking to increase the amount, I mean, increase the bond, and then to award this bid to Intricate Solutions for a cost of $1,705,000. Now, the $1,705,000 that we want to award for the HVAC is $68,000 less than the $1,773 of the bond that we're modifying, and that's because the children's library project had a $68,000 HVAC component which was awarded to Preferred Construction out of the same capital project, so that's 68, and 1,705, so 1,773. Items numbers 13, 14, and 15 are old renewals on different components of a previous bid for streetlights, poles, luminaries, and accessories. The first is for champion wire and cable for items number 43, 46. The second is for magnafold for items 32 and 33, and the third is to sentry electric ink for items number six, 10, and 12. Just for the boards and public's education, there are dozens, over four pages of items that will get out of the original contract. These three vendors are holding their prices, and we renew them, the other ones we have to rebid, that's going out next week, so in a future meeting we'll have other items referring to street poles, emergency accessories. I think that is on, I have to tell the boards, I want to point out, trustee Dean is not here tonight, but if he were here, I would point out that at the beginning of this fiscal year, we had, since the beginning of this fiscal year, we moved approximately $10 million of capital projects into a board, and in the next two to three months, we should send another $40 million projects that are in pipeline now, coming forward to the board, which should bring us very close to getting us into single digits as I committed to early year, and try to get as low as we can before the next fiscal year is upon us.
Good, next one. Ross, did you want to talk about the man and the project at all?
I really don't, but it will if you can bring it up.
Please. We have the construction company now, so.
So, as the public's aware, and the board's aware, and certain residents are aware, we've been talking about the Maryland Avenue roadway next to the station on Main Avenue, and the contemplate plan that's up on the board is to take the easternmost island, the large island where the allocks now exist, and the next most west of the island, which is separated by the Cutney Pedestal, and merge those together. The board at the last meeting, or meeting before, voted that that piece of roadway was not needed, not essential, and so that opens up the opportunity to close it off. The plan up there was put together by John Barrio, senior engineer, in conjunction with Mr. Janelle, and also with a lot of input from citizen and engineer Paul Rothenbeller, and he has a subcommittee of area residents who have been tweaking this all along. So as of today, I want to call it the final plan, but I think it's going to be subject to some alterations, which can be made anytime you're at construction. So the, one of the things that is outstanding is in the area of Houston Road, there were three utilities identified, forms of water main, which we identified was not present before the last meeting. There's a gas main there, I've applied to National Grid to remove that gas main, it's a two- to three-year project. President Chester didn't get a chance to speak to them, but we'll follow up tomorrow, but that should be coming out of the ground. They will basically cap it about five feet south of the low, the curb on the island, and then they will take out lead, ETS underneath this road and take that piece of pipe out. And the only thing remaining there is the six-inch or eight-inch sewer line which comes from the boiler room on the west end of the new platform that heats the platform during ice and snow weather, and also there's a sump pump under the elevator shaft. That sewer main is not, that sewer line is not an ordinary sewer line that carries human waste away from households and businesses, it is really just a sump pump that drains from those two sources. So we can plan around that. So that's where we are. There is the parking, as they modified, to allow for annual parking, accommodate better visibility for the drivers. These are parking in the back. These are parking and backing out. There are some cost estimates associated with this project. The closing of Houston Road impacts drainage structures that were there. The water has to be captured on the north side of the island. South of those parking spaces is three drainage structures there. There are the additional sidewalks, which, and I believe the majority of the sidewalks, if not all of them, are being placed on top of existing electrical utilities, which is the best way to handle utilities that have a hard surface above them. They can't be planted on really anyway. I think there's some discussion, and Mr. Rothabell will represent his own views on this, of eliminating some of them, but we left them in there. There's some handicap spaces that were not there before, but are now there. Mr. Barone also moved the crosswalk between the handicap spaces a little bit east to us closer to the ramp, to the platform. And there are some other modifications. Commissioner Jackson recommended that the eastbound, southbound Main Avenue returns into the station, that that become a stop sign so that oncoming traffic, and that's what we'll guard as well. So there are tweaks here and there. So we can move things and modify things. We can remove that parking spaces, add them, we can remove sidewalks. But this, this complete plan, and there's another sign to this that goes west a bit. This complete plan has been, has had tremendous input from the area residents, from Mr. Rothabell, who I extend a great amount of gratitude to for his efforts, not only with this plan, but all the efforts on Main Avenue. And it's presented to the board now for consideration. The contemplated cost of this, if it was on the diligence on completely, is based on our, our competitively bid prices for our roadway project, which includes all the elements necessary to construct here, is about one million, three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. That is without contingency. That is based on the assumption that we are responsible for everything, when in fact, the three T.C. contractors do have responsibility for the majority of the sidewalks. We believe the northern curb and the eighty-eight ramps. Mr. Barone has estimated that at about three hundred fifteen thousand dollars without contingency. So the real number's somewhere in between, because we believe that some of the roadwork, we are assuming our price belongs to them because they did trench the North Brown Lane and Main Avenue. So there is, there are components of the final pricing that we have to sit down with three T.C. and subtract out what they are responsible for in the contract to restore the roadway the way it was, and then what we will be responsible for, that we will put forward against the community benefit fund available.
When, have you discussed this at all with Al and Pascal, sitting down on this, Ralph?
So I have tentatively scheduled a meeting on Tuesday morning at eight A.M. that includes yourself, Trusty, the head of R and D, President of the Dallas, and Mr. Tifano from Long Island Railroad, and Mr. Pascal, Mr. Giannello will be there with me. Mrs. Wu will be with us, and I believe.
Joe Macey.
Joe Macey, and also maybe a few people from the Long Island Railroad. So the idea they have to talk about, a number of topics. One is the design. Another is their cost, their responsibilities in the design. Another is the baffling system on the platforms that is blocking the light from horizontally feeding into the neighborhood. They did some, they did some up on the west end, and it seems to be successful, so that'll reduce the light greatly. Another thing to talk about is the landscaping. Celia Peterson, I don't think she's here tonight, but she's been working very closely, both with Mr. Giannello, Mr. Barone, and Mr. Rothabell to come up with a landscaping plan. She has some final thoughts in. So we don't have numbers for that yet, and we don't have final planting species or sizes yet, but that is forthcoming. So the idea is to get all these things on the table, get it on the same page, the same timeframe, and then give the go, the work to proceed on these items.
Ralph, I have a question. The one point three seven five, does that include landscaping?
The one point three seven five does not include landscaping, because we don't have landscaping planned. So we think the landscaping for that space is probably in the couple hundred thousand here, depending on what kind of species and size trees go in there. I don't, I'm just guessing though.
But Celia has a plan, correct?
She, she has weighed in on some, I believe Mr. Giannello and Mr. Barone entered some trees in their specimen trees for the jury's purposes. But she has looked at that, says, no, we don't want this there, we want this type of tree. So she's going to reevaluate it, come up with quantities and sizes and species for us. Mr. Rothabell, I believe, is going to be meeting with her, maybe tomorrow or shortly. And so we're going to try to nail that down, because, and by then we should know, assuming the gas main comes out, we'll know exactly what's planted, what's not. She knows the wits and stuff of the islands, so.
The one million, three, again, that's assuming, we would have to pick up everything related to the project. And three T.C. clearly has done some damage to the road. And I think you indicated that they were going to take care of the sidewalk at some point.
Yeah, Mr., I talked to Mr. Pascal midweek last week, and he said, no, we have been sidewalks. And, and it's also, you know, it's interesting, because Mr. Rothabell may be in our green stuff tonight, but there's a question about whether we need all the sidewalks we have there. And I find that interesting, because on the dentaglio bridge we're on, where there's no pedestrians trying to have a carillon, we don't want to walk, but if you put one. And over here, where there's all these pedestrians, we're talking about taking it away. So whether, they might be obligated to build it, maybe not in the same exact position as Barone has indicated, but the amount of sidewalk they put in or not will subtract from the amount that Mr. Barone assumed in the plan that we would pay for. So he, Mr. Barone put it out there saying, hey, these are all the structural things that have to be put back in place. When Pascal checks off what he's doing, then with the math to it, we'll have more concrete numbers, no pun intended. And then we can, we can apply the community benefit fund if the road design, as presented, stays the way it is.
Right, so we also have to hold the responsibility for the Nite Park and Green Ridge Avenue, because they're supposed to restore that area. And that's the discussion we have to have on Tuesday morning.
Absolutely.
Can't forget, they start to go back, the Nite Park, and restore the property.
Right, that, that, the area, the area on the hill, on the Nite Park Road, looks like ragged.
It was a weak garden from the beginning.
And Celia Peterson is going to make a separate journey over there to contemplate not only that hillside, but the green circle and the area that they use for staging and access to the track. So that, those things could also be attached. Some of those we pass to community benefit fund, Nite Park Hill, I think should be redone on that one.
I think it should be done on that course. Definitely. Do it properly, so we have to negotiate that. I totally agree with that. That's part of what the MOU is supposed to be doing, is fixing that up and the damaging it. So we probably would be down in the million range or underneath it. Now, is this, is this on the contractor report at all, since we have a construction plan?
No, we don't need to bid this out. We've already bid out our road program. We have all these elements in there, it's a competitive bid. What we don't know is the contractor that has our road program is Jim Pratt, and the person doing the construction for three T.C. is Jim Pratt. But having said that, the three T.C. quantity and element cost, unit cost, may be higher or less than that, because there are so many more quantities involved with, I don't know, I don't know how big that contract is. So it's possible that, that some of these components under the three T.C. Jim Pratt contract might be less than the ones that are out with our plans.
I think we should ask Pratt to give us any information, right?
Well, we can do it simultaneously. The thing is, I think, I have a feeling that no matter what goes on, that all these items, I think, because, I can't speak for Mr. Pratt, but because he has contracts with both of us, I would think that we could probably negotiate to take the lesser of any items from both contracts.
So he could add it to the contract that he has now for the roads, what you're saying? Even though this is a new road?
If you bid it out, we're going to have to take another five bidders.
You think we'll take that one, bid it out?
Because once we, we could, we could probably put the spec out pretty quickly. It's basically the same spec. You don't, you don't, it's not the design you put out, it's the, it's the materials, right? It's the concrete, asphalt, and all that stuff, the drains. So it's not the design they're bidding on, they're bidding on the quantities that go into the design. So we could turn that out right away, because the bid spec basically exists, that's probably a quick tweet. Once we come back for the board, the October twenty-seventh, or November seventeenth, or special meeting, that's going to take three to five weeks for the new vendor to get their insurance papers handed in. It's, every time you get a new vendor, it's like four to five weeks. We never expedite that.
So Pratt can give us a fairly good answer soon as to what the cost would be.
Yeah, we haven't given this to three T.C. for fear that they can start again curbs or sidewalks and building this before the board and the public had a chance to say, we like what it looks like, barring any one final tweet. So, so I'm looking for the board to say, this is, you know, what we expect to see when this is finished. And outside of any tweaks Mr. Rothabell might want to have considered, we'd always take them down, it's not built yet, but is this where we're going to go?
So you, you want to sign your approval tonight to go there?
I would think a thumbs up would something, although I also want to point out that the neighbors had pointed out to Mr. Rothabell, I think he mentioned at the last meeting or to one of our many conversations, the neighbors over by the Roxbury area or Leadwood didn't want the parking spaces on the other side of the island, so we moved them, because we don't need them. I don't think, I don't think the number of spaces is relevant, whether, whether three or four, less or more there. So we did accommodate those requests through Mr. Rothabell.
Okay, so now we should move ahead with approvals as a board, and then whatever changes we have to make after, we can do that.
I have a couple of questions, which I talked to you about. The, well, first of all, thanks Ralph, and Mr. Giannello, and Barone, and Rothabell for all your teamwork and hard work. You've been doing a lot for the residency, we appreciate it. I have a question, you brought up the eight-inch sewer line, and also the water has to be captured. So my question is, which I had last time, which I'm not sure. First of all, you said the lights, there was some improvement. Does that also include, does that, hold on a second, does that also include the lights penetrated Houston Road here?
Yes, the platform lights on the, I believe, on the north, the east, the westbound side of the tracks are so bright, and they didn't put shields on them.
Yeah, no, I know.
We use the word baffles, but basically it's a shield that points like, we use the neighborhood lighting too, to keep light away from residents' bedrooms and stuff. Anyway, the mayor had asked for this, we'd asked for it many times, and they designed it, and they engineered it, and they manufactured it, and they installed it on some lines, I think, over the Roxbury area.
Roxbury.
Right. When I asked Mr. Pascal for the rest of it going up, he said we had to talk about it. I asked Mr. Tifano about it, he said they were being manufactured. So that's one of those questions for Tuesday morning. Where, what's the status of that, when are they going up, and who's handling that?
So they didn't complete it yet?
It's not completed yet.
I know they've been promising us for a better year now.
Oh, for a long time, for a year. He, they did that one section by Roxbury, and it does look better. It definitely does.
They're not, not down by Houston?
No, no, they just did that in one piece.
A small segment, okay.
Tifano told me that he would have an idea when we get this, but I haven't heard from him, so we'll probably find that out on Tuesday.
Okay. So we just need to get the left hand and the right hand together so we can deploy, right? So that's, that's what, that's an outstanding issue, but I believe that the intent is to manufacture and install it.
Yeah.
You have another question?
Yeah, so the, I'm fine with closing Houston Road as long as we have everything going in the right direction. Obviously, in a lot of the parts that you guys are sort of finding. So if we close Houston Road, can you still plant out of that closure? Or does the eight-inch sewer line prevent trees and so on from going up? Because I, my, yeah, my understanding is to block off the lights and the, the way it looks at the road.
So there's a couple of things. Number one, if you're up there now, standing in the roadway and look to the left, there's probably about four to five feet of concrete on the, on the rounded edge of that island. So right away that becomes dirt, you can plant in there. I believe you can plant, because the sewer line is eight inches, you can plant here, 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 and here around it. The sewer line is also eight inches, and it's not.
Where's the sewer line exactly, because I used to live there.
The sewer line is right, the sewer line is right down the middle of the roadway.
Okay, down the middle.
It's eight inches, it's about five to six feet deep on the angle going down. It's not a regular sewer line that carries waste away from households. It is just basically a drain. It's just, it drains, probably will be dry most of the time. So probably even attract roots like a normal water main, a sewer line. It's also, and Mr. Barone might be explaining this better, but it's, it's a new, the way it's built, it's highly, what's the, you keep telling me not to worry about the root, but why?
Houston High Post D R A team, which I've already asked it, so that's supposed it. So it should be an actual situation, or.
So basically, the way they built it, the design, the type of material it is, it's going to be almost watertight, so there won't be leaking water, and it won't attract the root. So I think we plant around it. Also, and I talked to Celia.
When we plant around it a little bit, it'll also block the view.
Yes, because when you, as young, you plant a tree.
For lunch.
It has a canopy, and that canopy, so if you plant, let's say you plant it four feet of long, that canopy is going to extend ten, twenty feet, depending on where you plant it. And, and so the canopy will have, will be up high with the lice, so you might be able to see a little below, but I think you can put lower bushes in there. So I really think Celia didn't see any problem, even if we left the opening the way it was to some degree. You know, we could close out a bit, but, but, so depending on the species you plant, and let it grow a bit, it'll leave cover. And it might be, if it's not evergreen, it might be a winter issue. But like I said, it'll lead up to the Nancy Park.
Thank you.
Okay, does your question, anybody else have any questions? Well, I think the concept is a good concept. Yeah. I'm concerned about this cost, and what we're going to deal with on Tuesday. That's my concern. I don't want to get, you know, from left field, from Tifano or from Pascal, say that we don't have the money left. I mean, I don't know what game they're playing, but again, I think it's a very serious issue. Oh, it is, there's no doubt. I think we should prove this point and move forward, and then. Well, I agree. I think the concept should be approved, I think it should continue to evolve, and we should be able to run the deals.
If you approve it tonight, we can get prices from both.
I'm saying, that's what she does, and I accept, I should estimate this comfortably, but we'll have more information on Tuesday morning hopefully. After our meeting, we can walk you out, how we're going to be happy, or going to be sad.
On Tuesday, I think on Tuesday. On Tuesday we'll know where we stand on each topic, and then, once we know what the facts are, we can, you know, react to those facts more than nothing.
I believe, Mayor, the approval tonight would be for the conceptual plan to go forward, but there would then be a subsequent implementation resolution that would need to occur once the actual costs are determined and allocation of funds. And regarding the allocation of funds, what's the situation with the community benefit fund?
So Mrs. Wu's on the phone, in case she needs to correct me at all, but the community benefit funds originally started out as two million, five hundred and forty thousand dollars. The board put in four applications way back when, three of them were approved by the railroad, and they amounted to one million, six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That leaves eight hundred seventy thousand dollars that we didn't do anything with yet. Out of that one, six, seven, oh, we spent approximately, we have four ninety-eight left out of that. So we spent our one point two, and four ninety-eight was left out of that. That four ninety-eight plus the eight seventy, comes out to about one million, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Now, the number one point six has been bandied about a lot. That's because when the railroad, when we put in reimbursement, the way this works is we take down one of the other surplus, we pay for this project that they approved, and then they give us back once we show the invoice that we paid for it. When we went to pay for the National Baltimore train station, the bill was one million, one hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars and change. They paid us back eight fifty-six or eight seventy-five, so it's two sixty-eight, two eleven that we've never gotten back to them, right around when COVID hit, they stopped paying it. So that's the difference between the one, three, six, eight, that is the net remaining amount. But technically, it's one point six, we wear receive, that two sixty-eight left. So there's, there's one six left in the fund, depending how you look at two sixty-eight.
And I think that two sixty-eight should go towards the remaining budget at this point.
So if you, if the two sixty-eight is not reimbursed for National Baltimore train station, then still there with the one, three, six, eight, so there's about one, six, three, six left. I just want to point out to the board, so as not to, I'll just make it clear, that two sixty-eight, if we don't put it back into surplus, that we use two sixty-eight from surplus as part of the funding, that's all. It's, it's, we spent the money on the project. If we don't take reimbursement here, we use it somewhere else, that's fine, we're not, it's not, it's not taking a hole. We're saying that we're using our own money partially for some of the work we did in the earlier applications. partially for some of the work we did in the earlier applications.
Ralph, didn't they agree that we could use remaining funds from Maryland as a local landscaping?
You will have no problem...
But didn't they like agree to that? That's what I remember.
They actually, and Mrs. Wu and I spoke to Mr. Tofano about six weeks coming on the phone to, first of all, go over these numbers I just verbally threw at you.
Yes.
And Mrs. Wu had his document and he's a spreadsheet. And he also said that there may be funds to be used for the contemplated road construction and landscaping, as we spoke about this evening.
Right. And I think we got that in writing, am I correct?
It's a mystic relation.
Yeah, because we wanted that in writing. I think we got that.
The only, the only difference is...
And they're pulling back on that.
Yeah. No, no, no.
No, they're not pulling back on it?
Yeah.
Until we have a meeting Tuesday, I don't want to make a statement either way.
All right, got it.
What I want to say though is that the, the way we did the car applications is we submitted the application, they approved it, and then it's kind of like a purchase order. We do that, we, once we spend money, we give it back. I think what's going to happen here is once we get this design, when we get, when we get down to the actual numbers, we'll say we need 1.1 million dollars for the road and we'll submit that application. They'll probably go to Fast Track and they'll say, okay. And then we'll say, and there may no go toward landscaping, unless we have some other category that we...
All right, so we'll find out Tuesday. Thank you.
I believe, so that I'm clear, the 268 has already been paid for the Nassau train station.
No, the 268, 211. I remember the number, it's going to look in after three days. The 268, 211 is part of the money that was approved for Nassau Boulevard train station. However, it remains an outstanding reimbursement because they didn't pay to us yet. They gave us the first part. So the money was spent, but it's still sitting in the community benefit fund. So the community benefit fund looks like it has 1636 in there, but that's a matter of whether you move the money for Nassau Boulevard train station, use Main Avenue, it doesn't really matter. It's...
So I'm certain Nassau Boulevard, we paid out to have it done.
Yes.
We paid out all the money to have it done. Part of it got reimbursed, part of it, part of it has not been reimbursed.
That's right.
So the money that is not reimbursed would either go to Main Avenue or possibly back to surplus, but there's no more expenditure for Nassau Boulevard as a builder.
There's no more expenditure. No, that money's paid to the vendor that did the work.
Okay, so are we moving forward to approve the construction plan? Can I make a motion?
Well, we have to approve the concept.
The concept, okay.
Contingent on getting better cost information as best we can do today.
Okay.
Right now, the numbers are all...
They are all over the place. They've gotten a lot higher than they originally were.
And sort of, sort of a chicken and egg thing because we can't get a firm on this we put in the zone. And so we can't, you know, we know what the money's on, we can't make applications. So this, this will handle all these other...
One of the issues I'm troubled with is that this 3TC has to review our drawings, these construction drawings and the specifications, and they will develop for a landscape, am I correct?
Yes, they will, they will, they are willing to build whatever we had decided upon, and they will assume their contractually obligated pieces, which is probably the sidewalks, the adiegrams and that northern curve. And I believe, although I can't say exactly, I believe the areas of the roads where the trench, that needs restored to as before conditions, which means million paving, not just a permanent patch on the trench. So that, and I, I don't know, if I could just ask John John, the road cost you have for million paving, is that just around the island? That's not the whole Main Avenue going back to Tennis Farm Road, right?
Uh, no, it's the whole from Roxbury.
From Roxbury to Nassau Boulevard. So that 641 is, is that portion. And I believe if they have to do the northern portion, that's, that's close to 40% of the work. So that could reduce the, our road cost potentially, but like I said, I'm just guessing here.
What is the motion you need Ralph to move forward on this?
I need, I need the board to say that what we see before you is, give or take a couple sidewalks here and there, Mr. Rochefort. Give or take that this is, we want to close Houston Road and we want to put the curves there and do the drainage, put new parking and, and, and we can work out the details about, you know, linear for the sidewalk here or there. But we can give this to Mr. Passwell, we can heat price it out the way it is and take responsibility for his portion. And then we'll know what we're left with. And then, you know, I...
We can do 3TC or Pratt at that point then.
Wasn't it?
We do 3TC or Pratt at that point, unless we know about that.
Right, but I think, once we get the numbers, bring it back to the board and say, this is what the cost, well, by the time this happens, we'll also have a meeting on Tuesday. So this is what the cost looks like it's breaking up to be. Are there sufficient, are sufficient funds in community benefit fund? Yes or no? Yes, move ahead and make the application. Mrs. Wu would make the application, Ashley has done in the past, unless we learn Tuesday that there's a faster method to do that, and then they would prove it, I'm sure, quickly within 48 hours. And then we can have Mr. Askwell start his portion. And the question is, is Pratt building our portion or just his portion? Or both portions?
All right, so I think...
Well, it's the same vendor either way, same crew, but a matter of, but is it...
So I think it's pretty, let's, let's simplify this. We're approving a concept as proposed per these drawings, contingent upon, right? Or we're going to have a separate proposal for, for cost estimates generated by 3TC? Is that, are you all good?
I guess at the end of the day, we have to...
I believe the resolution that we're looking for is approval of the board to submit to 3TC the plans that were drafted by Mr. Broni. The order out there can be a review by 3TC and allocation of the funds that they are to make and those that would be the responsibility to develop. This is merely for submission purposes. Only that following that process, they will then come back to the board for implementation and cost a separate resolution.
I don't like that. Bruce, you okay with that?
Yeah, I guess so. We'll move forward. I mean, the residents have suffered enough over there, so...
Hopefully we have a good meeting Tuesday.
Yeah, and hopefully we do.
That's efficient, Ralph, for...
Yeah.
All right, I'll second.
Social motion is made by trustee Torino.
A second.
Oh, thirty.
Okay, and I'll shut up.
Okay.
Everybody's there?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
By the way, trustee Chester, thanks for the hard work on this. We're moving forward.
Thank you.
We have a lot more work to do on Tuesday morning.
We sure do.
We sure do. Thank you. Let's move on. Let's go on to the items. Are there any comments from the trustee at all?
Yeah, I have a comment.
Okay.
First, I wanted to, with regard to the Stewart School Crossing at Clinton Road and Huntington Road, I wanted to thank Ralph and Commissioner for your work this week in trying to make that safer for the students and their parents and to extend that to the other crossings, to other schools. So thanks very much for your efforts on that. I think that's going to make a big difference. Second, with regard to traffic, please keep in mind that there's a survey that takes you two minutes, a traffic study that's ongoing. You can put in anything relating to any part of the village and you're free to do it more than once. Just put one comment in for each entry. And my final comment is with regard to, Commissioner, you mentioned a case that was taken down this week on a wire, $45,000 wire. And that brought to mind the great work that the Garden City detectives had done in a case I'm prosecuting where they, the lead defendant had gotten seven years in prison. And that was for an IRS impersonation. And phone calls to your home where they say, we're the IRS and detective from the Garden City Police Department. And I believe a sergeant had worked on that case, gotten statements from two of the conspirators. And your case just brought that to mind. And I wanted to thank you for that work.
Thank you.
Senator Charlie, following up on traffic, I know they got very busy in St. Joseph's a couple of times because St. Joseph's, their enrollment just grew and we're also getting towards 500 students now. So I happened to drive by, the commissioner addressed it and he sent policemen, I think they're going at least two days a week. And I went by and there, it was very well organized. And he did a very good job pulling it together. And that was nice to be helping the school out, you know?
Yeah, thanks for all your efforts with regard to Fourth Street and St. Joseph's School. And the traffic commission continues to look at that area, but I know the other officers are making a huge difference in making it safer for those 400 students. So thank you.
Let's move on. And there were, those are the agenda items. Are there any specific comments on agenda items? These are agenda items.
Mr. Walsh, do you have something you want to present?
I do.
Thank you.
This is either my new business, formal agenda site plan approval. I'm Kevin Walsh, 229 Seventh Street, Garden City, New York, representing East Rock Coffee regarding an application for 653 Franklin Avenue. For most of us in the village, we know it as the Old Blues Diner. Been out of business since the diner moved out, new owner came in. Because it's been closed for a number of years now, since the pandemic, we are here for final site plan approval and waiver of parking. The procedure and why we're here is because under our code in the village, when you abandon something, accidentally or otherwise, the use was abandoned, it reverts kind of back to a kind of a generic retail use. So if you want to change that use to something that even though it was a, it was a diner, you want to reinstitute the diner, the village takes the, the building department has historically taken the position that you need to come back, show us what you have in the site plan approval, change your use. In addition to that, because parking for restaurants is different in the village than parking for your generic retail, even though it was a previous diner, you have to get some type of approval for parking. So we expect, we discussed this with the building superintendent, the application we made for site plan approval on September 7th. The application received a recommendation from your planning commission, which studies these in greater detail as to both issues, recommended to you that you grant final site plan approval. A couple of words about the new location, if you may have seen the drawing, but a couple of things that are an improvement here. The seating is really reduced down. If you were, if you use that old diner and I did, the seating was pretty tight. Going to less seating, a little more room, handicap, building inspectors making sure we put handicap access, bathrooms in there, satisfying the state building code. We are also at the insistence of the building superintendent, which I think is a good insistence. We have cold storage of our garbage now, which wasn't required by us. So garbage goes out, mainly cold storage within our building, our space, it goes out then to full pickup. And that way, our community and space are cleaner. So we're looking for, the planning commission discussed the parking. We have to show you in essence that parking sufficient for this use can be found within the 300-foot radius. So one of the drawings has a radius map. It shows you the kind of enormous nature of parking lots around that can be used to satisfy that requirement. We have onsite parking, there are eight spaces, they're not all ours, but a number of them are available. We satisfied the planning commission that within the lot area, that 300 feet, there's more than enough parking for the 21 spaces that's not for this use. We also argued with them that successfully, that a lot of the use, if you use that diner before, a lot of it was local use. People around there, we went there for lunch regularly. So it's not a lot of people, necessarily a lot of people driving. And it's a, it's a good diner. It's a traditional diner, which I think we don't have here any longer. I think it would be a nice, a nice, a nice new diner coming in the village in a traditional way. So we're...
So your application was vetted by the planning commission, planning and European, and was approved by both?
A plus. Thank you. And that's the, any questions I'll answer.
Okay. How many spaces is it?
There's eight spaces in the lot on site.
Yeah.
In the surrounding area, in the counts that we did for the planning commission to study during the day peak hours, it was well more than 25, 30 spaces within that 300-foot radius, which is the test. Under the code, because it's 42 seats, we need to show 21 spaces available.
What was going to be the name of the timing?
I think it's going to be East Rock Coffee.
East Rock Coffee?
Yes.
So it is a diner then?
It is a traditional diner. Similar to the one that was there. It's just going to be nicer.
You're not, you're not naming it dispone?
No, not really. I can, I can go if you have a recommendation for that. I have a question.
So it's kind of like the other coffee shop that we approved on Seventh Street. This is...
No, this is, this is, this is the place I'll be having my eggs and bacon at.
Okay. Sounds good.
We need both. I have to say we need both.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Any comments on agenda items? Anybody on Zoom, Karen?
Yes.
Agenda items.
Karen. Karen, in, in federal?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. Penner.
Thank you very much, Karen. Mr. Mayor, members of the board, hope you're well. Thanks, Karen. I live at 301 Franklin. I've been a citizen. I've been here down 35-plus years. It's always funny when people say that to me. I've been a member of the P O A, fairly active over the last 20 years. And a year and a half ago, sir, I'm, I'm speaking, I'm sorry, guys, I'm speaking. I'm, I'm Roman Numro under nine.
Um, sir, that's, that, let's say that's the last, now that's, all right. Then we'll have to get back to our net, okay? It's like, any, this is on agenda items only? Anyone else?
No.
No. Let me tell you, I need to approve the minutes of prior meetings. Do I have a motion to approve minutes of the regular meeting of September 15th? Make a motion, we approve them. All right, all right. Have a motion to approve the minutes of discussion meeting September 22nd?
Make a motion, we approve them. Do I have a second? All right, all right.
Motion passes. Ready, any comments of inside the calendar? Wait, trustees? Seven, all right. Do we go on? This is the oldest. Now we move on. The presentation by the mayor's committee, am I correct?
Yes.
So do we have any members of the boards of government committee that are going to present?
So we don't actually have a power. I hope everybody was expecting, you know, a vote presentation.
I expected a lot of presentation.
All right, so you're going to give a talking. So we spent actually probably a year reading pretty often, talking about term limits in various ways. And we looked at what other villages are doing. There's actually not a lot of villages that have term limits. There's a handful and most of them end up with 12 years or so. Some of them with four-year terms, or they do three term limits, or three terms. Some of them with two-year terms, where they allow six, et cetera. There's a handful that are kind of outside of those parameters, but there's not a whole lot. There's not a whole lot that are actually going to term limits, at least not on like the legislative side. And so, but there's still a lot of benefits, of course, to term limits, greater opportunity to serve, more frequent competitive elections, fresh ideas. There's a lot of good reasons to, to enact term limits. And what we came up with was six years for trustees, six years for the mayor, where the mayor would be a three-year term. And so it would be a limit of two terms, three years each. Trustees, two-year terms, three ter, uh, three... So basically everywhere else we looked, they had an even number of trustees, such that the mayor would break the tie. Six trustees, if a three-three vote, the mayor breaks the tie. But in basically in all of those cases, you actually needed the majority of the board to agree on something in order for it to pass, where ours is much of, very much an outlier and you really only need four, uh, you only really only need half the board, um, in order to pass or I guess fail, depending on perspective. Um, and so we were looking to raise the number of trustees to eight. Uh, there's other ways to accomplish this. You could go to six trustees, you could say the mayor doesn't get a vote, but certainly whenever I talk to y'all, it sounds like there's plenty of work to go around, uh, if you added a new trustee. Um, and then having the mayor kind of be that ninth person where the vote would be, uh, the tiebreaker in the middle, but still require a majority of the board. Again, a lot of this was just, it was like ten of us in a room kind of arguing about the, the numbers and trying to land on something that the majority of us could agree on. Y'all could easily come to different numbers, uh, and I don't think anybody here, or at least anybody on the committee is going to say, no, 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 we were right, six was the right number. Um, so yeah, at the end of the day, it's, uh, I guess up to y'all to find that final number, but that's what we came up with.
Did I add one second? The, the other, the other reason for the eight trustees was because of the balance of one part of community agreement that everybody seems to agree with, is having an equal number of representatives from each section. And unless you want the mayor to continue to be rotated, you need two trustees from each section, so that the mayor doesn't necessarily have to go from, I don't know, east of the states to central and on and on. It's particularly problematic. It looks like the east is probably six or seven times the size of central. So in all these issues, whether it's boards or commissions, or looking for a mayor or a trustee, you have a much smaller pool to deal from, which is also not fair to the people in the east, because it's a lot harder for them to serve on a commission, because there's six or seven times the amount of people. So all these pieces fit together. The term limits, adding another trustee, um, and ending, quite frankly, ending the rotation, um, which if you go on the website and the mayor's column, mayor's welcome, it specifically says on the Garden City website, we rotate the mayor, many, many places. Um, so if you come into this town and you read our website, you will think that somebody is not rotating the mayor, that they're breaking a law. When in reality, it's just a tradition. Um, and you would spend a lot of time looking at rotation, if I, if I can recognize that, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Right, Don. Guys, uh, thanks very much. Uh, I, I served with the daughter John, uh, in fact, Michelle, I mean, almost about, uh, from late twenty forty until the beginning of twenty fourteen, Washington. And I have a very firm supporter of, of term limits as well as direct election. I, I would argue that our bare teeth, oh my darling, system of rotating the position every two years, serioam amongst the trustees, the village's important geographic sections, is an anathema. And it's a methodology that outdid almost a century ago in a very different time. Quite simply, I think it should be scrapped. Uh, the system has resulted in negative selection. Um, and it has robbed the village of the benefits and value of, of directly elected the mayor. Uh, I, they engaged in some unscientific survey over the last year, uh, and, and what I did is I called twelve, fifteen villages across the island. I tried to call villages that were on similar size and scope, and how to rotate the mayor. I, I think it is a, uh, it is a bylaw and effort to try somehow create fairness between the four sections. I don't even know which is out in, uh, the manner of order, whether we even need the, the geographic right now. This is twenty twenty-two. That a, a person who, who lives in the east, I would think, has been a little bit recently on an issue that, that the mayor, on the west, has security with, uh, I think, in their own backyard. This is not a political issue, this is not an F A B G C issue, this is not a P O A issue. It is a true, I think, of good mayor governance. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
The, the, the second topic we looked at, and I'll, I'll get right to it, so if anybody asks a question, we can combine them, was the whole use of committees and boards and having like representation on each of those. So the library employees has a representative from each of the four sections. Um, again, the, the east is twice, I'm sorry, six times the size of central, and there have been cases, when we talked to, um, we spoke to every head of board and commission in the village, where you had two or three people looking to serve from the east, but nobody from central. So we, we are representing the sections, not the population. Um, we had suggested to, um, certain groups that they redistrict via state, I'm sorry, the east and the central, move the line potentially from Franklin over to Washington or, you know, west perimeter, whatever it is, to get the sections a little more equal with the advent of five, five, five Stewart Avenue. That might add another three or four hundred people to the east. East is going to be pretty close to half the population of the village. And for them to not, to be underrepresented on every board and commission, while you people, or you trustees, are looking for somebody from a different, um, section, it seems to make no sense. Uh, I think there are some reasons for geographical diversity, but I think the trustees can decide when geography is important and when expertise and a willingness to serve is. So I think the village can throw it into your hands, rather than a map that I believe is only used for sanitation schedules. That, that was, uh, that's a misuse of that. Okay, maybe it's not used for sanitation, I'm just guessing. But that, that was, that was the, the thought process for those recommendations. Thank you.
Uh, Don. And, Mr. Mayor, I, I said one, one other quick, uh, then, uh, I am not necessarily in favor of creating a mayor position that does not allow the mayor to vote, except in high circumstances. Uh, it's early in, in the discussion, but I just wanted to go on record to say that there's, uh, I think I have a serious reservation about that and, and, and interested, uh, in the legislature as, as the board takes up the position.
So the recommendation of the board was the mayor would only vote in tie, his record, he, his thought was the mayor should vote no matter what, which I believe statistically will not make any difference, but the mayor will be more involved in that vote. Um, it will never, it will never change the vote unless someone is missing.
That's not entirely accurate.
Well, if you give an example where it's not, I'd love to hear.
Well, it goes as follows, let's assume for argument's sake that one trustee is not here.
That's what I said, unless the trustee's missing.
So, and under that set of circumstances, we have to plan for that. Uh, now, my suspicions already probably put the number of six years for trustee at the installation of my wife, because that would mean that I'm term limited out.
You wouldn't suggest it's wrong.
No, the, the expectation is not that we're going to start counting the clock from two thousand four or whatever it was that you started. The expectation is that it starts at whenever this passes.
It would, it would, so that somebody that had served in the past for six or eight years, who wants to come back to the board would not be knocked out. So that, it would definitely be going forward. So nobody is viewed as this is a manipulation to keep certain people out.
I believe that, I think that, um, it would be my recommendation that council gives us his guidance on the operation of this, uh, and how it should go forward. Thereafter, once council gives his recommendation, I believe we need to have a further, uh, I don't want to do it survey, but I believe that there needs to be more input from the residents, um, other than the music hierarchy of present.
I mean, you'd be changing the law, right? You would have no choice but to have a open meeting and, uh, yeah, public hearing, right?
All right. All right, great.
Gary, you want to make a comment?
Well, Garden City is unique around the state, having a eight-man board and having the provision that the mayor can vote a second time to break a tie. Almost every village in this state has four trustees and a mayor. And, um, the law actually, the village's law actually provides for two-year terms and permits a village to adopt four-year terms. There's nothing in the law that talks about three-year terms, although that may not prohibit the village from passing a local law and supersede that. There is some concern, um, the, the role of the mayor is laid out in the village's law. There is some authority that says that if the mayor's role is reduced, if his responsibilities or authorities are reduced, that's subject to a referendum. Uh, not having the mayor vote may, uh, fall into that category. Uh, as trustee Torino said, the normally you have, uh, you have to vote, uh, to pass something, it has to be passed by a majority of the board, not of the quorum and not of those present. So if you have, if you had a nine-man board, uh, you would probably, you would have to have five votes to pass something. That becomes difficult, maybe if the mayor can't vote, if there's a couple of people who are, a couple of trustees who may be out. Uh, the law does not provide, the village's law doesn't provide for term limits, but you can adopt term limits. You can pass a local law to adopt term limits. And there was one thing in your, um, recommendation that I, that I quite, that I didn't quite understand, that the mayor would be viewed as the chief executive. I'm not quite sure what you meant by that.
It, what it, what it refers to is him running the village more than being a political figure. It also is the three years, the lengthening of the mayor's term is actually to strengthen the mayor, not weaken the mayor. What it does do is it gives him more experience and has a longer term for him to implement certain ideas or plans that might be on his agenda. So we actually view it as a strengthening of the mayor and the, and the strength of the mayor should be based upon the support of the trustees and not because he has two votes. So that was, that was the trade-off. He, he loses the double vote when he gets an extra vote.
Yeah, the double voting was very unique, it's very unusual. It was only put into the law because, uh, with an eight-man board of trustees, uh, there was a possibility that if the board splits four-four, uh, you need, you needed a tie-breaking vote and the mayor got the extra vote. That is very unique and, and it was done simply because it was an even number of people in.
So to avoid that situation, we're suggesting an extra trustee, so that there's an odd amount of people. And I'm sure with your legal background, you'll be able to make it, if there's not two trustees here, that the mayor will be able to push it towards the five.
But the better thing that you might want to think about is, uh, whether, uh, this village should have a board that looks like every other village, or virtually every other village in the state, which is four trustees and a mayor. And that four trustees would give you the opportunity to have a trustee from each section and, and a mayor as well.
Several of those villages had a paid mayor who was a full-time mayor.
Very few people have.
We spoke, we spoke to almost every trustee up here, um, as well as some of the past probably fully, and they dealt with the amount of committees that trustee members serve on already, to cut the number of trustees at half and therefore they would have to double up the amount of responsibilities, as liaisons would probably be a little bit overtime consuming.
In terms of a paid mayor, uh, many villages have stipends for the mayor and the trustees, and there are a couple of villages that have a full-time mayor who is making a, a very substantial salary, the villages of Freeport and Hempstead, for instance.
We, we look, we look at that, we have a, a mayor on this podium, we had long conversations about that, who I believe was a full-time mayor, correct? As well as a paid, that's not the system of Garden City has. And quite frankly, it needs to be considered for four or eight years down the road. I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing. We were looking for things that we thought the village government, so we could have an immediate effect on, but that was one we looked at and spoke to many people on.
And by the way, the three-year term is quite unusual too. I, I have a survey from the National League of Cities, uh, and they surveyed all their members, and I believe, um, we, let's see, I have it here.
Well, we would be going from one unusual system.
Yeah, they have, in their, in the, in their survey, uh, a two-year term for mayor was, um, thirty-five percent of the, of the city surveyed, forty-five percent of the city surveyed had four-year terms, six percent had three-year terms. So a three-year term is unusual. And then, then the question is, if you're going to have two-year terms, that means you're going to have an election every year, I guess.
Which is what we have now.
Right. Uh, with a four-year term, the three-year mayor would not.
Would, would, would work.
Create an oddity, an odd.
We, we randomly asked, some years would be non, some years, it doesn't work.
But again, most of this can be implemented, uh, through a, an adoption of a local law. Uh, and I guess it's just a question of whether, uh, you know, the board, what the board wishes.
It's up to the board, thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Any comments, any ones, or just come up?
I'm going to move to my headquarters, Garden City. I approached, um, a number of U N meeting rooms at the senior center, right after the election, I think it was April, or maybe, or yeah, probably April, about looking into providing some kind of off-peak parking at a Long Island Railroad station, so people in my age group can take advantage of going into the city, getting to doctor's appointments by driving my car and parking it at the station. Um, the Long Island Railroad talks off-peak, any train that leaves from six AM to ten AM and arrives in the city at ten AM, that's considered off-peak. Um, this would be, like, I would think we could implement something like this after rush hour ends, so not to inconvenience people who are regular commuters, who are paying a hundred and fifty dollar fee to park there every day, weekends, whatever. I noticed that we can't park in, in the Long Island Railroad on the weekends, because it doesn't allow it without a permit. And as a senior, I'm really reluctant to call an Uber or take a cab. I'd rather just, you know, be able to get myself to and fro. I don't think, um, it shouldn't necessarily be limited to senior citizens. I would think anyone in the village who might want to take advantage of off-peak parking would be happy to do this, but I'm just proposing perhaps we start small with seniors. I've been to the NASA Boulevard Station a number of times, checking it out, smoking it out. It's really under equal grounds. There's a lot of parking there. Um, when I used to commute, it was really not built a little bit tight either, so we see there's an opportunity there to maybe give seniors this opportunity to go into the city. Now, with COVID is over, I looked at wanting to see plays and not be bound by, you know, George, can you pick me up at the station or, you know, come home late? But I don't think it would really interfere with the commuters. And that's why I'm suggesting maybe we start this as a trial, like limiting it to, say, people, seniors. Now, that's another interesting thing. If you are on Medicare, they define a senior as age sixty-five. Social Security defines us as, at age six, um, sixty-two. And then A A R P, which is really a money grab, well, you wouldn't know when you're fifty-two, but, um, I would just think, I would really, you know, like to propose this to the board and I hope you would consider it, because I think a lot of people I've talked to are very much interested in this. I've contacted my friends, people I know, I've asked, they all go, hey, this is a great idea. And I don't think, you know, you really want to have people going to Maryland, so parking there to begin with. Um, I think maybe countrywide press might be a little crowded too, because a lot of people park there. Um, even Garden City and Stewart Manor, I think those are busy stations.
Other than the New York City Authority presently.
I mean, you'd be changing the law, right? You would have no choice but to have an open meeting and, uh, yeah, public hearing, right?
Paul, Paul, I agree. Well, God City is unique around the state, having a eight man board, and having the provision that the mayor can vote a second time to break a tie. Almost every village in this state has four trustees and a mayor. And, um, the law actually, the village's law actually provides for two-year terms and permits a village to adopt four-year terms. There's nothing in the law that talks about three-year terms, although that may not prohibit the village from passing a local law to supersede that. There is some concern, um, the, the role of the mayor is laid out in the village's law. There is some authority that says that if the mayor's role is reduced, if his responsibilities or authorities are reduced, that's subject to a referendum. Uh, not having the mayor vote may, uh, fall into that category. Uh, as trustee Torino said, the normally you have, uh, you have to vote, uh, to pass something, it has to be passed by a majority of the board, not of the quorum and not of those present. So if you have, if you had a nine-man board, uh, you would probably, you would have to have five votes to pass something. That becomes difficult maybe if the mayor can't vote, if there's a couple of people who are, a couple of trustees who may be out. Uh, the law does not provide, the village's law doesn't provide for term limits, but you can adopt term limits. You can pass a local law to adopt term limits. And there was one thing in your, um, recommendation that I, that I quite, that I didn't quite understand, that the mayor would be viewed as the chief executive. I'm not quite sure what you meant by that.
It, what it refers to is him running the village more than being a political figure. It also is the three years, the lengthening of the mayor's term is actually to strengthen the mayor, not weaken the mayor. What it does do is it gives him more experience and has a longer term for him to implement certain ideas or plans that might be on his agenda. So we actually view it as a strengthening of the mayor. And, and the, the, the strength of the mayor should be based upon the support of the trustees and not because he has two votes. So that was, that was the trade-off. He loses the double vote when he gets an extra vote.
Yeah, the double voting was very unique, it's very unusual. It was only put into the law because, uh, with an eight-man board of trustees, uh, there was a, uh, possibility that if the board splits four-four, uh, you need, you needed a tie-breaking vote and the mayor got the extra vote. That is very unique and, and it was done simply because it was an even number of, uh, people.
So to avoid that situation, we're suggesting an extra trustee so that there's an odd amount of people. And I'm sure with your legal background, you'll be able to make it, if there's not two trustees here, that the mayor will be able to push it towards the five.
But the better thing that you might, uh, want to think about is, uh, whether, uh, this village should have a board that looks like every other village, or virtually every other village in the state, which is four trustees and a mayor. And that four trustees would give you the opportunity to have a trustee from each section and, and a mayor as well.
Several of those villages had a paid mayor who was a full-time mayor.
Very few people have.
We spoke to almost every trustee up here, um, as well as some of the past, probably fully. And they dealt with the amount of committees that trustee members serve already to cut the number of trustees a half and therefore they would have to double up the amount of responsibilities as liaisons would probably be a little bit over time consuming.
In terms of a paid mayor, uh, many villages have stipends for the mayor and the trustees. And there are a couple of villages that have a full-time mayor who is making a, a very substantial salary. The villages of Freeport and Hempstead, for instance.
We, we look at that, we have a, a mayor on this podium, we had long conversations about that, who I believe was a full-time mayor, correct? As well as a paid, that's not the system our city has. And quite frankly, it needs to be considered for four or eight years down the road. I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing. We were looking for things that we thought the village government could have an immediate effect on. But that was one we looked at and spoke to many people on.
And by the way, the three-year term is quite unusual too. I, I have a survey from the National League of Cities. Uh, and they surveyed all their members and I believe, um, we, let's see, I have it here.
Well, we would be going from one unusual system.
Yeah, they have, in their, in the, in their survey, uh, a two-year term for mayor was, um, thirty-five percent of the, of the city surveyed, forty-five percent of the city surveyed had four-year terms, six percent had three-year terms. So a three-year term is unusual. And then, then the question is, if you're gonna have two-year terms, that means you're gonna have an election every year, I suppose.
Which is what we have now.
Right. Uh, with a four-year term, the three-year mayor would not, would create an oddity, not.
We randomly asked, some years would be an oddity and some years won't. It doesn't work.
But again, most of this can be implemented, uh, through a, an adoptionable local law. And I guess it's just a question of whether, uh, you know, the, the board, what the board wishes.
It's up to the board, thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Any comments, any ones, please come on.
I'm going through two-way record, Army City. I approached, um, a number of UN meeting groups at the senior center right after the election, I think it was April, or, yeah, probably April, about looking into providing some kind of off-peak parking at a Long Island Railroad station so people in my age group can take advantage of going into the city, getting to doctor's appointments by driving my car and parking it at the station. Um, the Long Island Railroad blocks off-peak. Any train that leaves from 6:00 AM to 10:00 AM and arrives in the city at 10:00 AM, that's considered off-peak. This would be, like, I would think we could implement something like this after rush hour ends so not to inconvenience people who are regular commuters who are paying a hundred and fifty dollar fee to park there every day, weekends, whatever. I noticed that we can't park in, in the Long Island Railroad on the weekends because it doesn't allow it without a permit. And as a senior, I'm really reluctant to call an Uber or take a cab. I'd rather just, you know, be able to get myself to where I'm from. I don't think, um, it shouldn't necessarily be limited to senior citizens. I would think anyone in the village who might want to take advantage of off-peak parking would be happy to do this. But I'm just proposing perhaps we start small with seniors. I've been to the Nassau Boulevard station a number of times, checking it out, smoking it out. It's really under equal grounds. There's a lot of parking there. Um, when I used to commute, it was really not built a little time either. I saw, I see there's an opportunity there to maybe give seniors this opportunity to go into the city. Now, COVID is over, I looked at wanting to see plays and not be bound by, you know, George, can you pick me up at the station or, you know, come home late? But I don't think it would really interfere with the commuters. And that's why I'm suggesting maybe we start this as a trial, like limiting it to, say, people, seniors. Now, that's another interesting thing. If you are on Medicare, they define a senior as age sixty-five. Social Security defines us at age sixty-two. And then AARP, which is really a money grab, you wouldn't know until you're fifty-two. But, um, I would just think, I would really, you know, like to propose this to the board and I hope we would consider it. Because I think a lot of people I've talked to are very much interested in this. I've contacted my friends, people I know I've asked. They all go, hey, this is a great idea. And I don't think, you know, you really want to have people going to Maryland, there's no parking there to begin with. Um, I think maybe Country Life Press might be a little crowded too because a lot of people park there. Um, even Garden City and Stewart Manor, I think those are busy stations. So I think Nassau Boulevard might be a really good opportunity to, you know, start such a program. I don't want to give Karen alone any more work because, you know, they administer these permits. Um, but I think an off-peak pass would be really, really appreciated. And a nominal fee, I think, I looked at the fees, um, five hundred dollars for non-residents to park in our railroad station, a hundred and fifty dollars for unlimited parking if you're a resident. And, um, and that's like the five hundred, I think, is at the Nassau Boulevard and Stewart Manor stations, perhaps out of, um, Garden City residents. I don't know what, um, kind of parking permits required for Hilton Hall. I know, um, when it first went in, it was quite expensive. And actually, it would've been cheaper for them to just get a parking sticker and park at the railroad in Garden City. So it's just a proposal. Um, you all seemed enthusiastic when I talked about it in March, but it's now November. COVID is kind of over. I really want, I don't really want to take the railroad, but I'm ready to fly again.
Can I ask any comment? I think this is a great point, and I think we should look into it. And, uh, maybe Commissioner, as your officers, you know, are going through these areas, you can look at how the parking's looking on off-hours in which the last might be available for senior citizens. Would that be something you guys could look into?
That's definitely right. Yes.
Lynn, the time you're talking about for off-peak during the day is usually if you're going into the city, would you, like, ten o'clock in the morning till about three in the day?
They say off weekends and trains arrive in, in New York City terminals. So that could be Jamaica, Groton, Manhattan, and now, you know, the Upper East Side coming soon. So if it arrives after, you know, at 10:00 AM, um, I think you would start in Lawrence City, you would probably be able to catch like a nine-thirty train if one exists. I don't know what the schedule is, I haven't commuted in three years.
I, I second what, um, I think maybe from a run of the scene, I think it's a good idea to investigate, especially with the change in, in office work, work hours and people working at home. I find lots of the empty. I take the store, I go to the store every, I think, every, store down every day. And not a lot is empty. There's no one there. So again, there's a lot of space, I believe, available.
And I, I think it would be an opportunity to get some money in the, um, village, um, offers.
Or give you a discount.
That's right. Do you want to give me a percent off, you know, charge me ten percent in front of me? I'd be very happy.
That'd be very cool. It's a good idea, Lynn, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to also maybe find an next meeting or thirty minutes or so, we could get some information as far as, you know, from the village, as far as enforcement and, um, how we'd be able to do it, Karen, I guess, with the sticker situation.
My, I guess with regards to stickers is that it, it's, putting off-peak would just be a completely different color sticker.
I would think so.
And by the way, when I was looking at the wall at Nassau Boulevard, uh, in the morning, there was nobody there. I mean, and my office is at.
You didn't see me snooping around to make sure.
Not at all. And my office is at, she went the whole country road and there's a medieval lot. And, hey, there are a significant number of open spaces, more than half. So my assumption is that everybody who's going into the city would be likewise already gone.
I, I really don't, I mean, I don't wake up at six o'clock to catch the six oh six anymore, so I don't know, you know, how crowded it is, you know, from six, six oh six to like nine o'clock. I'm usually someone who would walk around there by ten, you know, in the city, no response. So thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Now, what about, um, if it was, if we started out by making it a weekend pass, would that satisfy a lot of your needs?
No.
Starting out like that?
And, and there'd be.
Because I think it's a lot easier to police, enforce, and would avoid a drain of people going for the much cheaper pass, the off-peak pass, uh, who currently pay the one-fifty.
Well, my doctors don't work on weekends, so, you know, when I go to the city to see my doctor.
Okay, it sounds like it's not.
Also, I'm, also, there's a lot of really good museums that have specials, like on Wednesdays, the Broadway Theaters and everything.
Wait, you convinced us, you convinced us, Paul.
You convinced him.
I'm going, I'm going home, I hope this city will have a place. Thank you.
Any, any comments on Martin Luther Holmes, yes, trustee?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, trustees. My name is Tom Dunlop, I live in Brooklyn, Manhattan. And I'm also the chair of the Mayor's Committee on Programmatic Use of St. Paul. Last evening, we had a second town hall in which we addressed adaptive reuse on St. Paul's building. The first town hall was a review of all the historic uses that the committee was able to, uh, collect for the last thirty years, suggestions from the residents. Uh, we have three more town halls planned. One on October twenty-sixth, which will be a town hall refer, reviewing, uh, facadeism. And one on November second, reviewing demolition. Each of those, much like last evenings, will reflect many of the comments that we received during our listening period, which was the end of June until, you know, September. Uh, that corresponded to the first period where we did nothing but review historic uses, so that we had a baseline for us. I would like to thank, and like many would like to thank, each of the trustees for arriving last evening. We very much appreciate your interest. We will continue the dialogue with our residents over the next several weeks. And we'll continue to report to you what we hear from them. Our objective is to make sure that all of you and many of the residents that are available have their voices heard. And we want to make sure that we report to you everything that we hear. But bottom line, it was very much appreciated that all of you showed up, contributed, and we'll continue with our dialogue over the next several weeks, beginning on the twenty-sixth, where facadeism will be reviewed, where we have invited anyone who has had any suggestion on facadeism, and there are several, and it's an excellent concept, uh, to come and speak on October twenty-sixth. And we will review what we have heard as well. Similarly, on demolition, we will have a number of presidents who have spoken demolition. And we will review all of the work we've done on demolition since January this year and add that to your, uh, uh, review of what can option to offer for St. Paul. But completely from the committee, your appearance last night and your participation, we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Any comments, please come on.
I just wanted to comment that the presentation last night and was very well done. And I appreciate everyone's following, there's a ton of work going into that. I look forward to the next two presentations. And, uh, for Mary, for your suggestion, I think they're gonna put the, they're gonna put the film on the website.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. Go ahead, please.
Kathy Norrell, former owner, and then, um, many people might think back, I think they did it to do them to look out my front door or look out my living room window. However, I happened to be reading a very good book the other day, and I'm thinking, what is that annoying sound in the background? I proceed to that window. Um, imagine, okay, I'm at Fort Marilyn Avenue, I'm facing the fiasco across from my house, there's no other word for that. But, um, it depended on which day of the week, um, these machines were on the east side of Nassau Boulevard, and then switched to the west side of Nassau Boulevard. All right. Um, I get very concerned when I see the print "environmental" on the side of a truck. Now, this truck was called MAC, M-C, MAC, V-A-C, environmental hydro slash air trenching. Have no idea what it is. There was also right with it, chasing it, there's another bo, uh, vehicle that's been parked there for quite a long time, a red vehicle, with the name Adler, A-D-L-E-R. Now, earlier, I guess it was yesterday, today, um, it was in my line of vision and whatever that environmental truck had, it was almost like a, a, a train. Um, and I could hear it pumping something in, into the Adler, whatever's sitting there. Does anybody have any idea what this environmental thing is doing?
My answer is no.
That's what I figured.
But I'm, I'm looking at, uh, MAC-VAC, Hydro Evacuation Services. It seems to be a high-pressure excavation methodology where they use high-pressure water to excavate against them, maybe to avoid traditional trenching. I really don't know. But I will, when we talk to the railroad on Tuesday, see if we can find more information out of that.
Yeah, where, where will the water be coming from? I mean, that, and you don't know what?
Just a guess.
Yes.
It's not necessarily water. It could be, it could be vacuumed some of the dirt to actually put in some utility gloves.
Well, that's, you know, it's a long, it's a long way to go. So it's a mechanism to fund that.
Okay. It, it just struck me as being unusual because two of the workmen on various occasions sat down by the window, they were dressed all in white. I'm not saying a hazmat suit, but it was a white jumpsuit and they had, um, yeah, hard hats, right. All right.
What were you reading?
Well, that's the whole trouble. I've been reading too many David Baldaud, and he's a thriller, you know? Spies and all that stuff, I should stop reading that. Um, two other points, if you would bear with me. The wall that extends to block the third track or all the tracks goes from Tanis Pond and it stops at Meadbrook. And from Meadbrook to Nassau Boulevard, there's called wall panels. Now, at this precise moment, I can, at any given day, look through those wall ban, panels. Um, I guess maybe it's plexiglass, I, I don't know what it's made out of. It looks like a large door. Um, and you see that all the gravel and the crushed rocks and everything. Not unpleasant sight when you're, you're driving around the area. Um, Paul, excuse me if I may address Paul Bronfeli, but he seems to know more about this. Did you say that they were going to block that with something?
They're going to put into, uh, like a plexiglass panel. I took pictures of what they've done in Coral Place. And the concept, I don't know if it's sound resistant or not, but it will be a panel. I cannot be able to see through, like, I can show you pictures.
But you can see through plexiglass.
Well, this is a cloud upgrade.
Okay.
But I don't know if it has any sound insulating properties or not. It probably should have.
It should.
The sound wall is what you're talking about, it's not a wall that's in New York. And there is nothing yet for that. And the station is elevated, this is, I believe, more for visual than sound.
Well, visual, it's not a very pretty sight.
Oh, it's not done yet. Even despite what we can believe they have heard the mayor of the governor say.
Right. In other words, in our dreams. Um, skipping to one last topic, um, the, the map that, um, the concept of the parking and everything, and doing away with Houston Road. Um, under normal circumstances, if Houston Road was there, if I were coming south from Jericho and I made my way around and then I'd have to go around Houston Road to get back to my driveway. Now, that section of, that useless section of Houston Road, which is now being called, um, you can sit there without blocking traffic to go either direction. And you can watch somebody coming at you, or somebody coming from this direction, or someone coming illegally from this direction. I now try to go down to Wellington because Houston Road is going to disappear, that section. And I, I hope that the island, which is very narrow at Wellington, will be broadened so that a vehicle can sit there while you're checking at traffic and that you're not track, blocking traffic, which happened to me the other day with somebody behind me trying to get around me because I'm caused at the intersection of, of Wellington to make my swoop around to get back to my driveway. So is that part of the conceptual plan also, to broaden that piece of property?
Paul, why don't you?
I, I, I mean, it is, but John's got the credit or blame. But actually, we've heard complaints from neighbors that the U-turn at Wellington was difficult. And, and John has narrowed the point of that block to make the U-turn, oh, sorry, to make the U-turn easier to do. So it's not broadening, he's actually narrowed it to make the U-turn for people more convenient or safer, or whatever the correct word is.
I, I, have, have you tried that?
Yeah, I reduced the size of the road, moved it up and curved the road towards the south. You know, so your vehicles are facing a little bit more towards the south. So the U-turn, um, and then for a car, it is for a fire truck.
Well, after last September's meeting, my neighbor was gracious enough to drive in. He drives a Toyota Highlander, I guess it is. And he said, oh, let's go and maybe swoop around Wellington so I can then get around to your front doorway, driveway. And he pointed out that if that house on the corner of Wellington had a car parked on that section, we wouldn't be able to swing around to go back heading towards Nassau Boulevard. So we're gonna put up no parking signs there? That's really gonna make a lot of people really, really happy when they're needing their, their better half coming off of the drink.
Yeah, so there, there wouldn't be no parking allowed on the south side of Main Avenue, uh, especially since we relocated the island on the west side, between Roxbury and Wellington. Uh, there's only thirteen and a half feet from the south curb line to the south curb line of the island. So there wouldn't be no parking allowed on that side of the street.
And I, I'm just curious, um, how many people on Wellington are going to be thrilled having their block now used as their affair rather than Houston Road, which is always the cutthroat? Just one woman's opinion, who has lived there since May twenty-ninth, nineteen seventy-one? Thank you.
So John, it sounds like your job is to keep Kathy safe. Alan, do my best.
May I?
Of course.
Steve Gray, Cambridge Avenue, Western Section. Nice to see you back for your celebrated Tory trip. And good evening, trustees. I attended the meeting that Mr. McDonald chaired. And he was very informative. It was lengthy, it was detailed. And I look forward at that time, listening to it, to hearing the November second presentation concerning demolition. Figuring I would learn more. However, at the end of that presentation, with no opportunity for anyone to say anything, trustee Torino made closing remarks. And at the very end said, you can vote for demolition and it'll be a pile of dirt. I resent the fact, as a member of FDEM, him drawing conclusions and making opinions without even hearing the committee's own presentation. Making their presentation about demolition is an innocuous, stock sort of thing. But if somebody says it's just gonna be dirt, if, um, Charlene Chardonnay living on Carteret, or Steve Gray's neighbor, Joe Sixpack, fine, here's gonna be dirt, what do I need to show up for? So, in the interest of fairness, especially since we do not have costs yet, I resent the fact that it's totally premature for anyone, including a trustee, to venture such an opinion that all this is gonna be. an opinion that all this is going to be is dirt. And I will back up my opinion that in approximately 2009, when there was consideration to knocking down both St. Paul's and Ellis Hall, there was a statement for proposed demolition in accordance with the Environmental Quality Review Act. And I can send each one of the trustees what I'm referring to in an email. And if you say, if you don't want it, please raise your hand and I will send it to you. It says that there are five steps. One is to identify historic components of the building to be preserved. I don't think anyone from the historical society is going to object to that. Two, removal of asbestos, leg pain, petroleum products, and other hazardous materials. Somehow I doubt anybody's going to object to that either. Removal of recyclable materials, because we believe in recycling. Four, removal of other items, historic items. And third, finally, demolition. And demolition would mean restoring the area where the demolition occurred, landscaping the area, not a bunch of pile of dirt for the intended use at that time as open space. As you may know, FDEM further proposes, we would like to see it be a park. And we're going to suggest, and we have suggested uses for that park. We're going to leave it up to the board when they frame their questions as to whether or not those suggestions are valid, whether they make sense, whether they're too costly, whether they should be held till later. That's my position. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, I'd like to receive that information.
You're the only one. I will send it only to you.
I would think everybody would like that.
I will be happy to send it to everybody. I have all of your email addresses.
Thank you, Steve.
If you don't want to read it, that's yours. I will never know.
We'll definitely leave. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Steve Alardi, Main Street. Regarding the, uh, discussion on the governance committee on term limits, uh, one of the lines in here says that the committee feels that term limits are overwhelmingly supported by village residents. Uh, I'm not sure how they came to that conclusion. Um, I'm at most village meetings, as you probably know. Uh, I don't know if there was a, a public meeting regarding the village governance committee to discuss any of this, how they came to their conclusion on that statement. The other thing is, I would have liked to have seen tonight a little more detail in what kind of research they did, rather than calling a few villages or saying, "Most have this, some have that, you know, these have four." And you could do three, you could do four, you could do six. You know, I, I, I would have preferred a, a better, more detailed presentation on, on this that's going to move forward. And, and regarding the other committees that they discussed not having term limits, the library, for example, has a five-year term. And to, to sit on a library board for 20 years, which means you start preschool and graduate college and the board has, potentially hasn't changed. Um, I would think 10 years on a board would be plenty of time to, you know, get back to your community and, you know, run a library. I don't see why anyone should be sitting on a board for 20 years. When we talk about term limits in this setting and then on the other setting at the library that has their own board, to say, "That's okay to do 20 years." Those are my comments and I would hope there's more public input prior to any changes. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Just like, for instance, the Garden City News this week has a, um, a poll. They're inside, they're self-select. I think you're already, uh, second time, I'm glad, I apologize. The Garden City News has a self-selecting poll of what the village believes in term limits. And I just checked, 86% of the people, self-selecting poll, were for term limits. We talked to a lot of people. I will stand by this statement. I think we have the village overwhelmingly, they believe in term limits.
Any comments?
More, well, 216 Kensington Road. In reference to what Kathy was saying before, I actually had a complaint from another neighbor saying that how many people are coming down that block. I don't have the information with me, but I went one night and I counted the number of cars waiting for people, how many people made the U-turn on Houston, how many went down Houston, how many went further. The original complaint, I sent that data to the bureau for a complaint that I haven't heard back yet. It's not a huge number of cars that are going to be changing. A lot of people make the U-turn on Houston and they probably didn't make the U-turn in that, not all I know. But I wanted to spend a minute with this first to say thank you to Mr. Quasi, Mr. Jimmelli, Mr. Baroni, in particular. And, uh, I, I'd like to just show you the landscaping that I'm working with Celia to give an idea to the board if you have a couple minutes. Brian's going to help me, I hope.
Was it something you sent me to work?
Yes, yeah, yeah, under the scans there.
Was it, was it, the pictures they're calling?
No, no, it's the scans, the parent. They don't come off all, all big or, yes. I can sit down? When I'm looking for it, Brian's.
Big trees, Paul.
Um, excuse me, ma'am, can we do someone on Zoom now? While we wait, you guys could, Brian. Judy Courtney, you've had your hands up for a while. Would you like to say something?
Sure.
Judy Courtney?
Aaron, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Sorry, two unrelated comments and then if I need to stop in the middle, one that is ready, that's my. One is on the, um, comment that Steve just made on the committee, um, the mayor's committee on St. Paul's. I was at the POA Town Hall, which was great, and they gave a lot of great information on that and they were going for turnout in terms of presentation for St. Paul's. One of the questions that I specifically asked was, when the presentation was made on November 2nd, about the alternative to demolition, what does that look like? Will that presentation include, um, what could happen to that open space? Could it be, you know, potentially a park or whatever? So residents had an option to consider that as fully baked. And contrary, and I didn't hear the comment, that was going to be dirt, which is kind of disappointing. Um, contrary to that comment, I was assured that that presentation on November 2nd would include a view of what that open space could look like if the building were blocked. So I'm hoping that that is consistent with what the committee is thinking, what we will hear on November 2nd. Um, secondarily, I wanted to make a comment on the governance committee presentation. So, um, and no disrespect to the committee, it was a little, as, a little bit formal also. I was expecting a little bit more in terms of intel and information. It's a really important, um, item for us as a village to consider and it just felt a little disjointed. I had read this post on the village websites, my understanding at least, is that right now, the only recommendations that the governance committee is making is for term limits and how the mayor is elected. Um, but I'm not sure if that's accurate or not. So, so I would ask for, uh, if this does go forward, you know, if there's a little bit more of a formal presentation and discussion of this. And that then leads me to my question. And, and there, I don't know if this is from you or, or for, or whatever. I'm not, I wasn't really clear on what next steps are. Is this just sort of an update of what the thinking on that committee is right now or to come? Or is this, um, a decision to be made or is someone a little on that? I, I wasn't clear on that at all.
I, I think we're going to be looking for more research and more information and then we'll be open for discussion and obviously it has to be a public hearing.
Okay. All right. So this is for like a stat sheet, what, what this was, and where they are right now and see what happens next.
Correct.
Is that there? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the screen?
George, Sam, and Jamie.
Yes, yes, George.
The Fieldhouse and Column Hall are key components of the St. Paul's campus. Yet we cannot, I cannot recall hearing very much about those structures in the current St. Paul's campus, kind of a left out. So I'm asking tonight, are these two structures part of the RFP and thus possibly to be subject to estimates and renovation for demolition? Or are they untouchable?
They're not untouchable. The, uh, the RFP is for the main building, St. Paul's main building. Uh, those structures, again, once we have more information on the cost of the St. Paul's main building, then we can address the rest of, rest of what we call campus.
So the estimates that are coming through, will that address those two?
I believe, I believe the estimate is only for the St. Paul's main building. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Paul, you're the last one.
Doesn't work with the gun.
I, I have a, I have a comment left to do. Can you hear me?
Yes.
It's Richard Correa, I'm going to be from Grove. Good evening, everybody. Um, just really quick for the meeting on Tuesday with the railroad, um, this thing may not be on your sentence, but, uh, one I am hoping that you could bring up is this guidance of the planting along Main Avenue. I, um, I'm not sure if the planting is completed yet. My understanding is that there would be additional plantings of vegetation, uh, pursuant to this stipulation settlement. Um, so it's a question as to status of, of, you know, whether or not they're, they're done. In addition, there, there do seem to be some dead or dying trees that, you know, may not survive the very, you know, arid and dry summer. And, um, maybe I'm understanding that if there's, there's provision for replacing those types of, of dead trees, that is another item to bring up. And then as to the lighting, um, you know, I, I've seen the baffling around Roxbury. It does seem to be effective, but there are the corresponding elements of the column lighting. You know, the, the columns have their own lights on them, very, very bright. And those, you know, are based and are visible on the south side of the track. And in addition, the, you know, what I've described, the decorative and sort of non-functional blue neon lighting, really, yeah, I, I don't see, what, they do your other purpose to serve other than decorative. And, um, I, I really think we have, they are supposed to be shut open now. Really, you know, really, um, that, that lighting is really disruptive and it really does take hours and they weren't starting bright. And, you know, hopefully with, with, uh, the planning, it's all coming together, the village, you know, this kind of education will, will ameliorate that situation. But, um, that could be one very simple area with a solution is to shut it out. There's, there's, there's no real purpose to it and it's, it's really ugly and disruptive. Thank you.
We'll definitely follow up, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, ma'am. Good seeing you.
And as far as the dying trees, uh, the mayor negotiated a two-year guarantee, um, to be replaced, yes.
Yeah, I think it's, again, the, the core problem is to, you know, I don't speak to the planting. I, I think it was a schedule, you know, the plant in the spring and perhaps in the fall, but there's been no activity. So, uh, you know, certainly the, just the stats update on that as well. Thank you all.
Thank you. Yeah, they're not down reached, so. Mr. Hartog.
Good evening. John Hartog, 82 Second Street. This is a topic which has been raised before and I know it could be considered part of the traffic calming study, but I believe that Seventh Street is a fairly simple issue. Doesn't require to be part of a complex study like the traffic commons, calming study. We have a lot of traffic that speeds through. We have a lot of very near accidents at the crosswalks. We've talked about install speed bumps or some other, uh, speed reduction, uh, tools and also concrete islands at the crosswalks to prevent people from parking in the crosswalks, which they do frequently. Um, and I'm not sure why that is taking so long for anything to be done to see if there are any, and, uh, are there any progress reports on that? Is it simply going to be included as part of the traffic commons, uh, study? Thank you.
The traffic calming study? Did you mean the satellite study that was just begun or?
Well, one that you referred to about people putting their, doing their input, for example. We've talked about it.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
Central section about, uh, one lane, two lanes.
It's not awaiting that. I mean, we intend to put some test, it was one or two test things that we wanted to put on Seventh Street. And one had a variety of names, Pedestrian Plaza, uh, it, it creates a large, uh, sort of block in the roadway where you have that crosswalk from Dunkin' Donuts over to the Town Meat Market, that crosswalk.
That one and the other one down, a little farther down, going, uh, west.
Yeah, I'm not talking about the one in Chase Bank. I'm not talking about that one.
No, no, there's one in between Chase.
Yeah, I'm not talking about that one either. I'm just talking about the one, we were going to test a device between Dunkin' Donuts and Town Meat Market. And we're currently discussing a price on that and we're trying to do that in conjunction. We were trying to do it in conjunction with some speed bumps on Fourth Street, but we don't have a report back from the residents there yet, so we may just proceed on the Seventh Street. And it's going to be just that one thing and it's going to be a test of, I think it was a pedestrian speed plaza, but it's a significant item that goes in there to stop both parking on the sides of the crosswalk and to broaden or elevate the crosswalk. It's only, its sole purpose was to protect, protect the pedestrians. That's it.
Right.
And it's going to reduce a lot of the parking at the edges of the crosswalk, um, because as I understand it, the shape of it will prevent, uh, parking at the sides. Anyway, that's something that may go in before anything else and certainly it'll go in before the satellite study is done. And, uh, but of course you can participate in the satellite study by taking two minutes when you get home.
William Mielo.
Thank you.
The pedestrian islands adds to be what we need for those locations, but I'm not sure that that is exclusive of the, uh, speed bumps that are necessary on Seventh Street. Anyway, people do seem to, to treat that.
No, those are two different things.
Yeah.
First, we were trying just to get this, whatever, pedestrian plaza in place and see how that works. Because if it worked well, then we could do it at the one that comes out of whatever, Hamilton House. And, you know, the idea was to put pedestrians first on Seventh Street. And that was our goal.
Great.
And so hopefully, uh, that will be there sometime in the next few months. It's, uh, it's not something that's awaiting the satellite study.
Glad to hear it.
It's something, we were just discussing prices with the vendor and whether we were going to put out an RFP because we didn't like the prices. That's a discussion that's ongoing.
Welcome information. Thank you.
Mr. Hartog, just as you may know, changing the behavior of motorists is a very frustrating task. Um, the commissioner and the traffic commission have the down Seventh Street W O lines. As anybody who passed their driving test knows, you're not supposed to do a new turnover. Uh, I have one of the shop owners who faced... I have one of the shop owners who faces there has almost a chartboard how many times a day she's able to mark the individuals who do a U-turn. It is frustrating, and yes, the traffic commission is trying to do as much as they can, but...
I'm glad to hear there's progress on this, thank you.
Awesome builder, we'll be back.
That's right. Brian's going to help me out.
Hey, Les, gents. You're looking dangerous, postpone the meeting.
All right, this is, uh... This is basically what Celia put together with John, and then we're just making some modifications to it. John's put together a whole list of different plants. These are controversial right now, the white pines. Celia asked me, "How can I put them on there?" And I thought she put them on there, so we can have more discussion. Actually, we meet with her tomorrow. But the concept is the, it might be hard to see up here, but the, the light yellow on the top, that is what the three TCs already committed to, and they're going to be planting, I'm not sure this year, but that's part of the contract. And then what we tried to do is, I just, Celia's plan that was laid out, we tried to reverse it so that, not reverse it, but some places where she put the city's trees, I would rather have an evergreen at the end of the block, so when people are looking up trying to block the lights at night, it would be year-round blocking the lights, so that's something to change this. Somebody brought up the idea of the path in this area, so we want to add some evergreens in there to cover that area. John did a real nice job in switching the, the crosswalk back further. We no longer have the straight block of Houston going into the lights. The biggest disagreement that Celia and I have is she wants to buy small plants because they're cheaper and easier to get, and I want to get tall plants because they have to cover a pretty high range of net of rice. But all the plants that were bought the last time, not all the plants, but the majority of the plants were, even the Norway spruces, 25 feet tall. The, the city's trees were three-inch caliber, 20 some odd feet tall, and they do block the area better. We're going to meet tomorrow morning at 11 o'clock, we go with this plan. It is basically what you said it would be. Have you had the other one too, Brian? It's just swapping around some plants, and that's what you see at the end. One of the... One of the areas that's somewhat controversial is, isn't the big gray building that they put up in there, and it runs up to the top of the station? I put some X's in the back that you can see, and I put Laleon cypresses, and Celia said I'm using too many Laleon cypresses, the U-scream giant's not good with that. So we'll just change that tomorrow, and then that block, we'll bring plants up further. She suggested something of Norway spruces on the center island that would relocate, that's fine. And the swaps up here are the same thing, this was the city's trees for white pines or Norway spruces, so the people looking at the end of the block will be able to see evergreens. And that's pretty much it. Hopefully, we're going to have something to John by tomorrow. I think the content's there, and I don't, I don't see it, I don't raise a problem. This is as information, sorry.
Thanks, Paul.
Any other comments? Uh, anyone on Zoom? Harry Dunn, they have motion to go through. Your motion, I will hold. Okay?